I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska Governing Body, the City of Seward provides for the Nebraska Open Means Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Means Act is displayed on the north wall. Well, actually, which, I don't know what direction it is. Is that the north wall?
Yeah, there.
We have, on all the walls, we have a copy of the Open Means Act, um, as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes. Uh, do we have, well, I'm just announcing it. We are recording this. Uh, we usually have the sign over there. Um, participant's signed sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. The senator shall approach the podium. Uh, we have a chair. What do they say, Greg? We want the presenters.
Uh, we'll just have them stay where they are. They can stay where they're at.
Okay.
Just give us their name and address.
Okay. Yeah, so just take your name and address for the clerk's record, and then you're asked to limit remarks to five minutes. Uh, all remarks shall be directed to the mayor, which shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The City of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Hamphret.
Here.
Hendricks.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Calderman.
Here.
Holden.
Here.
All right, first item this evening is the draft minutes of July 7th, 2020.
Move to approve.
Sorry. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Hamphret.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yep.
Singleton.
Yes.
Beck.
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Calderman.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Motion, carry.
Uh, next we have the, uh, consent agenda consisting of the next six items.
So move.
Second.
The motion and the second. Please call the roll.
Hamphret.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yep.
Singleton.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Calderman.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Motion, carry.
Uh, next we have, uh, two appointments. We have the reappointment of Ken Schmieding to the tree board for a three-year term.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion and the second. Please call the roll.
Hamphret.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Calderman.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Motion, carry.
And next we have the appointment of Jeff Volzki to the cemetery board for a three-year term.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion and the second. Please call the roll.
Hamphret.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Calderman.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Motion, carry.
All right, um, next we have our first public hearing. This is an ordinance approving final plat of Seward Rail Campus PUD first edition. Greg?
Yes, uh, this is, we just had this up for preliminary approval, I believe, two meetings ago. This is the final plat of the Seward Rail Campus PUD first edition. This basically plats out the majority of the area in excess of the 30-acre original rail campus site. Nothing has changed preliminarily from the preliminary plat. Uh, just certain adjustments. We added all the easements in that we will need ultimately for most of the utilities we can identify. Um, some of that includes some of the utility and vital utility easements and everything for the substation and connecting it to transmission line and things like that. Um, other than that, we have, uh, city engineer Mike Onabey on standby here, and if he wants to cover any other miscellaneous items, then we can answer your questions. Mike?
So, good evening, Mike Onabey. Good to meet you all in person finally. So there's, in addition to legal description, there's, there's three exhibits that are included here. They're very hard to see from the scale. I think we've already described them accurately. Uh, it's a good plan for the future. We identified the, uh, various outlots, A through E, and the various lots for sale, 137, in this first edition. So we're excited to have some additions to this rail campus, and I think it's a good plan going forward. And as Greg mentioned, we've, we've tried to adequately provide easements for all anticipated, uh, utilities to serve anybody that should, uh, should want to locate in that area.
Any questions or comments from the council?
I'll do the third.
One second, we gotta do the, uh, other comment portion of the public. What is the public hearing?
I got you on that last time.
Oh, you did? I feel really proud right now. You have no idea. Well, wearing the mask, you wouldn't see how much I'm glowing. So we do have a public hearing, so we have a public comment portion of the public hearing. If anyone from the public wishes a comment on this item, please raise your hand. Seeing no one from the public, then I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And if there's no other comments or questions from the council, would you like to introduce?
Now I'd like to introduce that ordinance.
All right. An ordinance to approve the final plat entitled Seward Rail Campus PUD First Edition, as here and after, set forth, located in the southeast corner of Section 29, Township 11, North Range 3, East of the 6th, Prime Meridian, uh, City of Seward, Seward County. Is that right?
Principal.
What is it, PM?
Principal Meridian.
Uh-huh. Principal Meridian. Thanks, Greg. Um, in the pamphlet form, to provide for an effective, uh, date hereof and ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form, the ordinance has been read by title, and it designated as ordinance number 2020-14, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
Motion, carry.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Hamphret.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Calderman.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Motion, carry.
All right, then, this is, again, ordinance, ordinance number 2020-14. Would you like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Hold on.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I see none. The question is, should ordinance number 2020-14 be finally passed and adopted? Please call the roll.
Hamphret.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Calderman.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Motion, carry.
All right, uh, next item is also a public hearing. This is special use permit application for property located in the 200 block of North 6th Street. Greg?
Do you want to say this, or you want me to do it?
Well, I do. I'll turn it over to Tim.
Tim, also.
He's here. Let him have fun. I'm here. I'm, I'm up and I'm alive. Planning Commission reviewed a proposed Scooters Coffee House, 240 North 6th Street. Uh, in reviewing the site plan, it was determined there was one deficiency. And if you look at that site plan, it's a counterclockwise, one-way-in, one-way-out lot. And what they've done is they've, in a sense, landlocked their lot, and employees were going to be asked to drive through the drive-thru to get around to the north side of the building to park, because everything was one-way. Well, Greg recognized that we had an issue with their dumpster, which is in the northeast corner of the property, and how the garbage truck was going to get in there to dump the dumpsters. Well, once it was in there, it would have to park on the neighbor's property, which is Scott Dunes' Loggie, the old Mike's Market property. So recognizing that, the Planning Commission decided to go ahead and recommend to the city council the special use permit for Scooters pending a driveway easement agreement between Scott Dunes' Loggie and Scooters Coffee, which I received today, the signed copy, which will be, uh, registered with the clerk sometime tomorrow. So with that, they rec, it was unanimous approval for recognition.
Any questions from the council? Otherwise, again, this is a public hearing, so we can open up the public comment. If you from the public wish to comment on item number two, please raise your hand.
I can answer any questions.
We just want to stand up, state your name and your address.
Kevin Hall, uh, 2933, Busom, Nashville, Lincoln, Wisconsin.
Could you just talk a little bit about your problem?
Yeah, um, my wife's a franchisee, um, that I'm facilitating things with her partner, uh, into this process. Been working with Scott, and he's very flexible on everything, so that he's, uh, for the trash, you know, for the truck to go through his lot. Um, worst case scenario, he wouldn't have done it. We could have angled or changed the, yeah, the dumpster. I mean, it'd be fine, but, uh, but yeah, so that's all rectified. Um, I know one of the concerns here in Seward is drive-through with car stacking. Uh, the way we have it designed is our menu board is as far east on the lot as we can make it, so we have a good stack. The, one of the, the drive-through pickup window to the street background of the building is about 11 cars, I believe. Um, we typically get those cars to the drive-through. Our target is under, under a minute at the window. So you won't see a very long line of cars at any time during a busy location. So, um, if there's any issues there, that, uh, any questions, if you want to ask any questions.
Sure. Any questions from the council? Yes, Adam?
Are you going to be open, uh, all day long? What are your hours going to be?
Yeah, uh, we're looking at opening at 6:00 AM and probably closing at 8:00, and see how that goes.
8:00 AM?
8:00 PM.
8:00?
Yep. Um, extended if it's, you know, busy at night, or come back an hour. Typically, we try to start off 6:00 AM, 8:00 PM.
Does that include Sundays?
Yep, Saturdays, Sundays.
Have you, have you had any conversations with the church that's right next door?
No, not yet. Um, I asked Scott about that. He said there's, they use it for parking, it's not a lot. Um, but then again, uh, we, we probably won't have a lot of course money, so, you know, if, uh, there'd be more than one, we'll use, you know, so we'll have a conversation with them and try to, you know, we might have four cars parked there. I think there's about seven or eight stalls maybe, so.
Is it primarily then drive-through?
Drive-through only.
Only, okay. So you wouldn't have any customers parking there?
No, no.
Usually, with some employees?
Right.
Is it anything but coffee, anything else on hand?
Yeah, uh, smoothies, um, teas, espresso drinks, um, maple sandwiches, burritos, and some pastries.
How do you make that in under a minute?
Um, the drinks are fairly quick. As soon as a customer starts to order, the, the baristas start making that drink. So by the time they get to the window, the drinks are typically very much made, for the most part. The pastries and everything are, are made in Omaha, in the Scooters facilities. Um, so basically, it's a quick mirechef oven, it's a little bit like a, a sub we might use or whatever. So you'll cook a cookie in 10 seconds, it's not in the oven 30 seconds. So typically, that stuff gets thrown right in the mirechef oven when it's ordered. So by the time they get to the window, the, the drink and the food's typically ready to go.
Thank you.
It's pretty, it's a pretty simple process. There's not a kitchen or anything like that, so.
And there is a five-car stack from the order board to the window. So if you figure, you say in a minute, you have five minutes before, you know, at the most, you can get around to the drive-through windows, so.
I mean, I could see having, you know, in the morning with our little Seward rush hour, heading to Lincoln.
Yeah, uh, the one in Lincoln, I mean, that I go to quite a bit, uh, there's a period, you know, where they, they'll get a eight-car stack, um, use it pretty quick. You know, you're never, in that location, never to the street, but, uh, but yeah, I imagine in the morning too, you know, but that's when we have the most people on. And, uh, you know, really geared towards that, you know, our goal is to build it fast, because faster we are, the more people come to the drive-through, so.
Any other questions or comments? Not thank you for being here this evening. If you want to from the public wish to comment on item number two. Seeing no one else, now we'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing. I believe this just requires a simple motion. Is that right, Greg?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, or someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, go through.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
It was anyone of us, it doesn't matter.
This question is recommended by the C.
Yes. Please call the roll.
Hamphret.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Calderman.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Motion, carry.
All right, uh, next, uh, under our administrative items, our first item is discussion of adding pickleball courts. Greg?
Yes, uh, this item comes to us from kind of two different angles. Uh, the first being a conversation I had, uh, with some residents uh, quite a few months back, in Bob Corr as well, and I may even add him. Uh, we were approached by residents who were interested in adding pickleball as a recreational option in the City of Seward. Pickleball is a game similar to a mix of tennis badminton, um, table tennis. Uh, it's played with a paddle, um, with a ball similar to a wiffle ball on a adjusted tennis court with approximately a appropriate-sized net. Um, very, very, very popular amongst seniors especially. Uh, it, even in my time in Beatrice, we had a clamoring by seniors looking for recreational outdoor activities to install pickleball courts. Um, pickleball courts can be installed just generally, uh, in certain areas, or you can retrofit a tennis court with the proper markings, but then you have multiple markings for both tennis and pickleball. Um, and so that initial discussion went on, uh, the potential of forming an association to promote it, uh, camps to be put on to get the community excited about it. So those are kind of in, in the process of being worked out and looked at, uh, earlier in the year. And then, uh, as most of you know, unfortunately, we lost a member of our community, specifically our employee community here at the City of Seward, the passing of John Hughes, um, this spring. Uh, and when John passed, uh, his wife, Jody, contacted the city and wanted to look at doing a memorial in John's memory. Uh, and that memorial was to look at installing and help put funds towards installing the first pickleball courts in the City of Seward. And so I felt that it was appropriate with noting that we have these memorial funds potentially to come to the city as a gift for this, that we bring it forth right away, not wait around for a budget decision or anything else, and really solidify the idea of moving forward on an option for pickleball courts. So I went back to Bob Corr and Adam and said, hey, give me a number. And our first discussion, and the discussion that's been going on for about the last year, is that we felt like the current skate park and the former tennis courts down at Moffett Park are incredibly underutilized. I said, I see more skateboarders up at the elementary school than I ever see down hanging around Moffett Park. And so it's been kind of identified that that old tennis court would be perfect to install two full-size pickleball courts, redo the surface, and then also you'd have the lights and everything else available there, and that would be a, a nice place to utilize for pickleball, rather than just painting over the current tennis courts and then having to navigate back and forth. So that was a recommendation. Adam and Bob went and got an estimate for resurfacing and painting and striping of that, and I think I put the number in your agenda, approximately $15,000 to redo that, that court system. And so that's, if pickleball is something you wanted to do, uh, and utilize these funds, um, our recommendation is down there. And just kind of signal to us tonight that that's the direction we want to go. We'll make sure it's included in the budget, uh, at the full cost, and then whatever offset there is from the, the memorial gift, uh, we'll just take that and rub with it and see how things go. I think you'll see an initial wave of people that want to utilize it, and we're excited about it. Um, again, you know, I wanted to get out there because I didn't want to leave these memorial funds sitting there. Pickleball is not the direction we want to go in any way, shape, or form in the city. I wanted to allow, uh, the Hughes family to get other options for those memorial funds to, to remember John. So that was kind of my purpose in bringing it forth tonight. I know that Jody's here, Ed's also here in support of it, and so if you do have any questions specific for them, you can ask, but, uh, I can answer any specific pickleball questions you might have, so.
Any questions for Greg? Yes, Joe. So, since you're talking seniors, is it going to be ADA compliant as well?
Um, I, it will, it has to be, but it's the surface similar or same tennis one. Um, I know we have a tennis player right now that actually, uh, we have some ADA adjustments on the tennis courts we're making. And so we will make sure that you can get into it, and that the gaps are widened up and things like that. So we'll do adjustments for that, but that's probably approximately what it is. And then, I haven't seen the surface in regards to if there's sidewalk access into it, uh, but we can also take a look at that. So it's really about access, getting into the court, make sure the widths are widened up or the offsets, and then take a look at the sidewalk. But we could address that too.
Any questions?
I think it's great. Will the city be responsible for all future maintenance?
Yes.
This is not a public hearing, but I know people are here to speak on this item. Would anyone like to speak on this item at this time? If you'd like.
Ed Gonzales, 1877 Rainbow. Um, not only seniors, but I don't know if I consider myself a senior yet. But, you know, come down with, uh, conditions. I've got hip arthritis, and pickleball is a little less impact than full tennis. And, uh, it is, uh, gaining a lot of popularity, so I think it'd be a good thing for the community. And in addition to Jody's, uh, memorial funds, there's other people willing to donate towards the cause as well.
Thank you, Ed.
Yeah, Stan Mitchell, 1514, against the drive. I would echo that. Uh, my wife and I vacationed in Arizona this last February, and, uh, I know there is, you, you can't get on the pickleball court, it's just huge. And so we came back and got kind of interested in it. We joined the, uh, there's a pickleball association in Lincoln that we joined. And if you know where Peterson Park is, it's right off Highway 2, uh, not quite to 27th Street. It's behind that diner. But there are 10 courts there, and we have stopped, and they have all been full. Now, pickleball is kind of a doubles game. You can play singles, but, I mean, it, it was fantastic. You had trouble finding a parking spot there. So I really think it, it'd be great for Seward. I think, uh, you're right. Uh, I used to play a lot of tennis, uh, early age, and, and this is a lot like tennis, but it's not as, as strenuous, you know, for us old people that, that I had our nine-year-old grandson playing with, with us here this last week, and he was two. But, uh, anyway, just my two cents. I think, I think you're going to be really surprised how many people are really going to go out to the school, because it was really, really, you know, particularly, you talk to people that vacation in Florida or Texas, or, and that's kind of how we met a couple in, uh, in Lincoln, uh, happened to come on here for about the same time, and they had just come back from vacation in Texas, and they're all excited about, you know, they played it down there, they want to play it more, get better. So, actually, there is also, I think, a clinic that's going to be here, I think, in September. I think it's, we're working with the rec department, but, again, I, I think it's going to be tremendously, uh, popular here in Seward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment? Greg, did you have something?
Uh, I'll just add, um, so again, long-term then, our other option is to add, so if it is very popular, um, we can add additional court space at the current tennis courts. We'll just have to have extra striping for that. So there is room for expansion if it is popular. Uh, we can work through an association, or it can be additional programming through the rec department, uh, to help offset some of those maintenance costs. We can help be the funnel for getting tournaments and, and leagues and things started, and people signed up, and Adam's used to doing all that, so that may help offset maintenance costs. Uh, but we'll work with whatever associations up. And then I would echo, uh, the statements made. Bob Corr went up to go look at the different courts that are available in Lincoln, and he went past that one near Highway 2 at about 10:00 in the morning and said that it was completely full, just inundated with people playing pickleball. So it is incredibly popular for Lincoln right now, so.
All right. I guess at this point, um, you only have an action item on this. I guess it's just more or less, is there any objection to continuing down this path? Uh, was the council? I guess I would like a motion if the council would want to have us pursue this. Obviously, you'd have an opportunity in the budget process to discuss this again, but we just kind of need some direction so that we can utilize our time in the meantime efficiently.
All the motions of the Seward.
Motion, a second?
Who is the second? Alan. Thank you for coming.
Pick your finger, councilman. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Hamphret.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Calderman.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Motion, carry.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have an ordinance. This is the second item under administrative items. This is an ordinance directing the conveyance of real property legally to drive as an approximately one-acre tract of land located on Lot 4, Block 2, and a portion of Lot 1, Block 2, Seward Rail Campus, original edition, City of Seward, Seward County, Nebraska, to Brian Lavander.
Yeah, and we'll just make a few adjustments to this. We did speak with Kelly today, um, as with all the PUDs and replacements and stuff. I will note, the legal description will ultimately be Block 3, uh, or Lot 3, Block 2, uh, and then, uh, not a portion of the other one. We guys replatted this. As you remember, okay, let's, let's restart. Let's go back first. As we know, uh, the city's been negotiating an interest in the rail campus by Brian Lavander. Yeah, Bruce Lavander's, uh, auto shop, which primarily across the state is a franchise that he owns. Across the state, they do auto body repair. Uh, what he's looking at to operate in Seward is an auto body repair shop, along with a full-service shop that will do oil changes and, and irregular maintenance items as well. Um, Brian approached us last year and kind of had interest in the rail campus, but ultimately due to COVID and other things, this thing just kind of languished. So some of these original purchase agreements and items came from clear back when you guys first started talking with him, you had interest in the process. So we've replatted this already, and done some other stuff. But essentially, it's still the original, uh, dimensions that are outlined there, the $2.25 per square foot. Um, but it will be Lot 3, which is that southwestern lot directly out in front of Pet Source. And then, as noted here, there'll be an option on the one-acre lot directly north of that. That will ultimately end up being Lot 4. And so the one-acre lot with an option on the number one one-acre lot, uh, for the same purchase price, uh, that you see here listed. Um, and then the only other one is noting a change that will involve referencing a northern lot in the option on the northern lot. So those are the changes. Um, excited about this. Excited about this, another tenant in the rail campus, he was very excited by having Pet Source kind of come in at the same time with all those employees down there and everything else. You kind of have a built-in crowd potentially for the service maintenance side of it. Ultimately, if this is approved, you'll also see it's conditional upon tip, which the rail campuses blighted substandard already, so it's tip-eligible. And then the last one will be, is a special use permit will also be coming, and that will deal more focused on the visuals, the fencing that will go around the facility. So when they do have somebody's car that came in, but they got a dented-up vendor, they have to bring that in beside the fence. I'll be behind that, so there's a bit of screening and things like that. But that will be handled through planning and zoning, then a special use permit to be considered by the city council. Everything else is pretty standard fare for us in regards to our purchase agreements. It is a purchase, so there's a remontage period, thirty days as well. So we'll start working out those extra details for the remontage period, and start pushing through those. But subject to those adjustments to the final legal pursuit of the plat approved and that one reference. And I believe also the closing date will move to September thirtieth, just because of timing in regards to getting a tip application, I think, and all that stuff in, and finalized, you won't really get them till September thirtieth. Subject to those changes, we would recommend approval, that's what we decided to do.
In selling property, can we waive pre-redears? We can do all pre-redears, please.
You can waive the rule for those. The only thing you can is like forced annexation. Or any annexation, sorry, that's my rule, Kelly's rule is any annexation, can't waive it through. Attorney's different on that one, sorry.
So we have this before us, are there any questions or comments from the council to start?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
An ordinance to direct the conveyance of real property to Brian Lavander. To provide, a publication of this ordinance have been performed to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty twenty dash fifteen, and the title is hereby approved, and a motion to dismiss this statutory rule. A motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Camper.
Yes.
Hendricks. Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman.
Yes.
Welkin.
Yes.
Given this is ordinance number twenty twenty dash fifteen, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted and read?
One minute.
Second. Can that motion be subject to the recommended changes?
Of course.
Motion subject to the recommended changes.
With a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, given the question is, your ordinance number twenty twenty dash fifteen be finally passed and adopted, please call the vote.
Camper.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman.
Yes.
Welkin.
Yes.
This is our last ordinance for this evening, so any one final motion to make all the ordinances a part of the permanent record?
So move.
Order.
Motion in a second, please call the vote.
Camper.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman.
Yes.
Welkin.
Yep.
All right, next, item number three, change order and final pay request number three for Seward Rail Campus Highway fifteen improvements. This is the turn lanes, Greg.
Yes, final one for the turn lanes into the rail campus, essentially the PUD. This includes just the lane working Highway fifteen and the intersection that is there where they added the turn lanes, the entry road adjustment into rumoring in that adjustment, and so all the work that went on with that. The widening of essentially the bridge approach, the adjustment of guardrails and all the striping, everything else that went with it. I will note there was a slight error, and they got it rectified. There's a final adjustment upward, approximately five thousand dollars. And it was in for, it was only for temporary pavement marking and striping. That adjusted from five thousand two hundred eighty-eight to nine thousand nine hundred forty-seven, so slightly below five thousand dollars. That was the only change that came through from the one you have in yours. And so, again, total on this one, we were approximately fifty-two thousand over with adjustments that they found, so thus the change order. And that was because they also widened the roadway and the asphalt lay. Once the final NDOT approvals went through, they deciphered that they needed to widen some of that burr. So you can see when you're coming down south, that turn lane tapers way off to the right. There's a big gap area, and that was the final design that NDOT, after getting into it and looking at the guardrails and how they would line up and stuff, wanted it. So the adjustment of the additional asphalt, the striping, as we discussed, and the quantities that they're associated with are what had this project go up. I will note, we're gonna approve the final one for the rail campus improvements, and that one was approximately ninety thousand dollars under budget. So that will be an adjustment down on the change order for the next project. So, I can answer any questions about the project? Again, the final approval for tonight will be in the amount of total work to be paid, two hundred and ninety-six thousand six hundred thirty-nine fifteen on the final one I have here, again, adjustments that's starting.
Greg, is this in addition to the five hundred thousand that the state was contributing to this?
Yes, this one did have the five hundred thousand, so they paid for essentially half the project.
You have questions or comments on item three A? We just need a simple motion on three A, correct?
Yep.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, so first, between.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Can I back up? Greg, don't we need a motion on the change order and final pay, and then the claim three A is separate, or are we getting all those combined?
They're both included, there is the final, there's a change order and final pay request. I'm fine with just one.
Okay. Camper.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman.
Yes.
Welkin.
Yes.
Motion here.
Item four, and four A, this is change order and final pay request number, for Seward Rail Campus improvements, Greg.
No changes on this one, again, this is essentially a very large project that we undertook. This is the final one for the thirty-acre site and some accoutrements there adjacent to. This one includes, you'll see all the information on the thirty-acre improvements. We have the Boulevard Entry Road, which is now Worthman Boulevard, as we approved the PUD today. And then additional thirty-acre improvements. We did do a drainage system that runs basically south of the substation in the Heath property of Plum Creek Ag to help with drainage for the entire site, that was change ordered into this previously. And then we also did some site preparation while we had this contractor out there for the substation, ahead of installation of that. And so all of those things together, combined together to make this rail campus improvement project. The final contract amount, we ended up coming in ninety thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars under budget for all of those elements combined together. And so this will kind of finish off the rail campus for now, until somebody initiates something else that pushes us further west. But we have plenty of available lots now with water, wastewater, electric, and street access, so. I can answer any questions?
Any questions or comments for Greg? Given this would just require a simple motion, would anyone like to make a motion on this item?
Want to approve the change order and final pay request?
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Camper.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman.
Yes.
Welkin.
Yes.
All right, next, item number five, change order number one with IES Commercial Incorporated in the amount of thirty-two thousand six hundred forty dollars and sixty cents for the thirty-four point five to twelve points four seven KV Industrial Substation Construction Project, Greg.
Yeah, this was a kind of a two-phase one, the biggest one being the temporary feed for Schuler and the timing that they came in, and when we made, basically threw the MOU with Schuler, we had a guarantee of when they would have to get power. And so as we continued through the substation process, we came up with a feed mechanism to get them online and finalized. So that's the ten thousand dollar one. It is utilized, but it was just a different mechanism and route that we ended up using. The whole project's not finalized out yet because we're still finishing up a loop feed back to the Walker Substation, and we've been dealing with BNSF on that, and as you know, BNSF doesn't move quickly on anything. I think the original plan was to see if we could slab in with some of our other easements that we have running through there, and it was determined ultimately it was too busy, there wasn't enough sufficient room, and we had to acquire another easement that we've already approved the agreement for. But that's one of the final elements before closing this one out. And then the other ones are just elements that they found once they got into, so additional substation rock, replacement of the seventy between the BF I and the switch, and then the bore for that rear road crossing, rather than running through where we were before. So predominantly, these are just some adjustments, but again, the big one was the temp feed for Schuler, as making sure we fulfilled all our obligations through the MOU, get them online in March, and then the adjustment on the BNSF, so that bore and acquiring easements and stuff. So once we get into, through that, we should close this one out entirely, and be done. I can answer any questions?
Any questions or comments for Greg on item number five? He's not going to entertain a motion.
I'll make one, you go first.
Don't look at each other anymore. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Camper.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman.
Welkin.
Yes.
All right, next, item number six, consideration of service agreements with Nebraska Municipal Power Pool, providing a financial plan, cost of service, and rate design study for utilities, Greg.
This one is just an item that we up every year, and in talking with our administrative staff, just with everything else that we have going on, we feel comfortable moving forward one more time with NMPP before we go out to look at a rate study. I went over it with Bonnie, I also went over it with Nick in regards to just looking at what we want to do. We feel that it's efficient between these guys, the assistance we get with the budget from our audit firm, that it's a good extrapolation to look at and get different views on helping us set rates. And then they ultimately do the legwork for us of setting up the new ordinances, if you do make any recommendations for adjustments in the rates. And so we'd like to continue moving forward with this one for two more years, and then try to hit, hit you back up with like an RFQ later on to see who else is available. But the pool is drying up quick, firms are continuing to kind of shed certain things, focus on other things, and we've seen that a lot lately. And so some others might be picking this back up for rate studies, and some are dropping. But we'd like to move forward with NMPP for another two years, if you would agree to do so.
So Greg, the fee here is for two years, or does it mean?
It's, there's, let's see, I'll get you the agreement opened up there. They will cover us for two years, they do most of the work in the first year, and then they come back and just make adjustments because they assume that you're moving through. It's like, almost like doing a biennial budget. And so then they just come back, re-verify a few quick things, and then kick you out in another ordinance and budget documents.
Don't you, you paid in two, over two years, is that not right? Was that your question?
Yeah, because I, I mean, I would just number it, I'm like, that's double what I remember us paying, so, but it's the two-year, which makes sense.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments on item number six? About the entertaining motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Camper.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Finn.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman.
Yes.
Welkin.
Yes.
All right, next, item number seven, acknowledge receipt of Airport Authority Resolution Requesting Levy of twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one fiscal year, Greg.
Yes, this is the annual resolution that Airport Authority has to send to you, requesting their levy. Basically, this is the same as last year, for their levy request. We're anticipating on the conservative side, a two to three percent increase in property tax assessments across the city. It may be higher, but we're trying to be conservative in our budgeting right now because we don't have an official number from the assessor's office yet. And after some snap foods last year, we're not gonna get it any earlier than she's comfortable in giving it to us now. And so we want to make sure that number is right. So we're being a little bit conservative building the budget, but we still anticipate two to three percent. I think this is the year that the fullest, like onsite assessment was done of all properties in Seward, which is about on a five-year rotation. So usually, you're pretty definitive going up, and you guys have already seen.
It's all gonna go up.
Yeah, you guys have seen, as I have in my home, everything went up that we've talked to anybody about. So we anticipate a bump in revenue, as you guys have held true in the past, is to leave the levy alone and look at what rise in property tax revenue we get off of just those assessment adjustments. And so Airport Authority's not adjusting theirs, if the city council holds true to our traditional path that we've been on, and if we choose to do so, we'll be able to hold ours as well. That's where we're at now, so we'll present you the actual airport budget.
Any questions or comments for Greg? Will you entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Airport Authority Resolution Requesting Levy of twenty twenty-one fiscal year?
One minute.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Camper.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman.
Yes.
Welkin.
Yes.
Next item is the city administration report, Greg.
We got a lot of stuff, and I know we haven't gotten together in a while, so I'll just kind of hit some highlights, but if you have things you want to check about, please let me know. And the last thing we'll talk about is COVID-related items, again, as we have traditionally done in the past. Just an update, we got a lot of projects going on, a lot of projects kicking off still. The Waverly Road project is moving in short order to paving for the year, and then they'll shut that down. They'll start at the, they, as I may have explained to you before, they discontinued further to the east than they had planned. They weren't gonna discontinue at the border of Columbia, but they recognized that the height, the final height of that concrete did not align with the asphalt blown there, and so they said it meant better, they continued to the east. And so we worked with the school district, and we took that all the way to the approach to the middle school, so you can still get it in and out from Carol K into the middle school. But they'll be concrete all the way to that point. They'll start at the middle school on Southern Lane, to the eastbound lane, they'll go all the way to Highway fifteen, turn on Highway fifteen, and come all the way back on the westbound lane. And that's how they'll undertake that process. So once that is cured and they get out for the year, they'll close it down. And then we might have some discussions with the school district, they may come back in the spring early. Otherwise, we anticipate them being back to finish the rest of it after school gets out in May. But depending on how fast we can get a temporary revenue, maybe we'll work something out with the school district and then put a temporary in for their access to the middle school, and just get started. Because the big project to the east will be, there's some retaining wall and stuff that will go in, and that will involve a lot of cut as they go out through that area. So that's what's going on with Waverly Road, but it continues to move along at a good tick. East Seward is finished up the second phase, they moved over to the third phase, and we'll be looking at that section down by the dog park. And then they'll come in kind of at the last element with utilities and everything else, and do the actual roundabout. So they're moving along at a pretty good tick as well.
Hey Greg, on that?
Yes.
I haven't been out there for a while, what was ever decided on that last four hundred feet with the county?
The county, so I've been working with quite a few neighbors out there, you know, local resident, Mr. Baker, who lives out the county portion, and I'll just be honest with you, the county has been kind of apprehensive about the whole thing. They ended up kind of taking us on a lot of abuse chase about who, what, who's responsible for what, and maintenance agreements from ten years ago had to pop out, and all kinds of other things. And so I'm just working with the residents out there and providing them with information, and trying to attend their meetings along with them. They're kind of pushing the county to have the county pay for a portion, if not all, or just that segment that we've talked about to Goldenrod. Technically, Goldenrod is also a county road back the first half a block. I think the county is surprised by that, I mean, there's just a lot of weird things going on with it. But I'm trying to work with the residents out there, they're, that border right on it, and get them the things they need, and then attend their meetings at the county to see what happens. We'll probably have some money in there also for the long term, because there's discussions about all the way to the highway. So when you guys get to one and six here shortly, long-term, that will be in there as well. So we're just, we're working at it at different paces, but we're trying, we're getting into debates about the whole thing with the county, and they're sending us on some interesting research projects, so. But we continue to work on it.
And we'll likely revisit this with them later this year, probably after November.
Another one is North Columbia, so the asphalt overlay that we saw last year from Highway thirty-four up to Lincoln Street, the next phase of that that is going to go on right in front of Concordia. Unfortunately, you know, everything you hope works out perfectly. We bid that project to go from July fourth to August fifteenth, based on the calendar for Concordia and everyone else that we saw last November. And if you're paying attention, you know that Concordia moved up their calendar on us, so. Yes, and we caught it luckily, but then our contractor kind of has, you know, they have other projects and things going on, and they still feel like they can get it done within the contract period. It's kind of not shown up right away, and we had to get ahold of them and things like that. But ultimately, we think we have a plan together, we met with DUCOM and Dale, and Concordia today on site, walked the project, started mapping out alternate routes for incoming students, for when athletes come on, and when first-year students come on, everything else. We're gonna put up some temporary no parking in the southern areas off of Moffett, just to help accommodate some of that. And then we have a definitive plan, we're gonna distribute leaflets to the homes that will be involved on North Columbia, and then over off of Moffett. And so we think we got a plan together, it's gonna be a temporary thing. North Columbia will be completely closed for one day, once they go in and, because you can drive on it when it's milled. It's just when they're actually laying the asphalt and then it cures for that one day, that's the one day it will be closed. And Concordia is very nice, understanding to some extent, that they understood it had to get done. And so just try to line it up to the best date possible. It has to be completely done by the fifteenth, but we think they may, they may start on the approaches and the corners this week still. You can see that they went out there and did their eight-on-one call already, and had locates pretty much all done by today, I think. So we may see them show up and start working on the ADA ramps and the corners, and some of the approaches in the Concordia this week still, so. But Mike and Bob Myers are gonna coordinate that and make sure we work on everything, but we think we've got a good game plan to tackle, so. Another one's the Sixth Street Water Main project, we've seen that going on, on Highway fifteen. That's just an interesting project because of all the random fun things we ran into, literally and figuratively. Literally a storm sewer, figuratively. Just finding, you know, you're working with hundred-year-old utilities and infrastructure that was laid into the ground, and us finding out that not only are GIS, but the actual plans we have aren't accurate in regards to, you think you got four-inch pipe, and then you get down in there and, you know, bless Tim Richdick, that guy can tell you the size of a pipe from six miles. of a pipe from six miles away, and he's like, that's not four-inch, that's three-inch pipe. And then we're like, well, that's even worse, that's, like, we're upsizing this thing substantially, and we're finding out that it was even worse, and it went off in different directions with three inches that went further than we even thought. We found custom-built fittings where it was tapered from a four-inch to a three-inch, which is just insane. And so they're just having a heck of a time with that, but they continue to move forward, hopefully they'll be out of there before the season's up, but that is an interesting, interesting one, the topography's going to help even, so with that big dip. They continue to work on that one. Working through a few openings, we have a police opening that will close this week, we will get started with the civil service process for the chief of police. We will have a little endeavor for Allen, you know, proper social distancing, right numbers and stuff like that, but that'll be taking place here shortly, so I think you got the email on that one. We have an opening in the municipal building for that administrative assistant, Mindy has fully moved over to City Hall, and so Mike and Tim are flying solo there, or as a duo by themselves right now, but we're going to hopefully fill that one in short order as well. Any other city-related items, just general city stuff, do you guys have questions on that?
Have you looked further into the stop sign or traffic on East Moffett? Or not East Moffett, East Maple, up there by the middle school off of?
That one was one that Jake was handling, and so we'll have to transfer it over to Mike, and then we have the traffic committee, which is the chief of police, who will no longer be here, city engineer, street superintendent, myself, and so we'll keep taking a look at that as we'll get started here.
Yeah, with Waverly being closed down, that's going to be a very high-trafficked residential area.
I'll bring that up to them and maybe before we get out here with Columbia being closed up there, that's going to push it even further, so we can bring you something on that one.